Thank you. I appreciate the support there. All right. So again, good morning, everybody and welcome back. It's great to see everyone and I hope you've been well over the last month. Carrie's for those of you who joined after Carrie already mentioned that she's in London at a conference. So she's going to be unmute. She's freezing a little bit, but I do want to give you space, Carrie, if you want to say hello real quick.
Yes, just a quick hello to all. Megan, thank you for running the show today. You're in good hands with Megan and thank you all for being here. You're in for a good presentation and a great session.
Awesome. Thank you. So as you all know, we are coming together to organize the healthcare sector in New York City to align our workforce agencies and employers to consider how and to consider how policymakers focused on the healthcare sector might also engage. On the screen here, you'll see our norms for working together, which we've all reviewed together a few times, but most important is we love to see your face and ask you to keep your camera on if you can. So thanks to all of you who are showing us your faces. I appreciate it. And most importantly also is to remember that your honest feedback will make the network work network better. It's still the morning, guys. I can't talk. Make the network better. And if everybody can use an available zoom reaction or a physical thumbs up to show, we all agree that this is a good space that we can be truly candid. I'd appreciate it. Thumbs up, thumbs up, emoji thumbs up. Thank you. Awesome. Any any norms to add before I move on? Are we good? Perfect. If it'll let me move on. Here we go. So I'm going to properly introduce our guest, Nick Daniel from from Niyachu's here with us today in a few short minutes, but I thought it would be helpful for him to know who he's in the room with today. So I'd like us to go around and kind of popcorn and just say our name, organization, role, anything else quick you want to share. And I also want to point out, in addition to me and Carrie, we have two jobs first team members here with us today. Who I'll let them introduce themselves, but Alison and Christine, Christine is here to help me brainstorm how to get some some words out about what we're doing together. She's our communications extraordinaire. And we also have Alison here. Sitting into she's our evaluation extraordinary. That's what I like to call my coworkers. So I'll start with the intros. I'm Megan Marshall. I'm the Associate of Work Solutions at Jobs First NYC, and I will pass it off to my colleague Alison.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Alison Bade, the manager of Evaluation and Learning for Jobs First NYC. And I am excited to join you all today to support Megan with note taking. So thanks for allowing me to share this space with you this morning. I'll pass it over to Christine.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. I'm Christine James McKenzie and I'm the manager for Communications and Policy. And we are excited that Megan's leading this while Carrie is out. As Carrie did mention, you are in capable hands. Please let us know if there's anything that we can assist with while Megan's presenting. And I will pass it on to Terry.
Good morning, everyone. I am Terry Sossier, Director of Employer Engagement and Residential Services for PIPs Neighborhoods. And I'm happy to be here this morning with you guys. And I'm going to pass it off to my my supervisor, Dwayne Brown.
Good morning, everybody. Hope all is well. Hope you're warm and toasty. My name is Dwayne Brown. I'm the Deputy Executive Director for Workforce and Education for PIPs Neighborhoods. Lovely to be here and see familiar faces again. I'm going to pass it off to Amy.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Amy Robbins. I'm the Director of Advocacy for PHI. And our big organizational news is that we have moved out of the Bronx and we now have shared office space in Manhattan. So I yeah, I know, right? Wow. I will pass it off to Beatrice.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'm so glad to be here. My name is Beatrice Brown, Deputy Director for Setnix Alliance in Brooklyn, Williamsburg, and I'm happy to be here. I'm going to pass it down to my manager and director Larry.
Hi, everyone. I'm Larry Rothschild, Director of Workforce Development at Saint Nick's Alliance. Also excited to be here and I will pass it on to Jill. To quick.
If not Jill, let's pass it to another. Your choice, Larry. We'll get Jill sometime.
But Christine.
So I think if unless there's another Christine, I've gone. So Stephanie, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Stephanie Villas. I'm from Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. I am the Director of the Careers that Care Healthcare Training Program here. And I'm happy to be here. I'm going to pass it over to Nicole Sanchez.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Nicole Sanchez, also from Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. I'm the Assistant Director of Career and Education Programs here. And I will pass it over to Salma.
Hi, everyone. I am also from Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. I am the Senior Job Developer here. I will pass it to who didn't go.
Is that everybody?
I feel like everyone wins.
I think so too. I also want to say congrats to Cypress Hills on your new workforce center. I so wish I could have, I could have been there. So snaps for you guys. I can't wait to hear more about it.
Thank you so much.
I might, I might call on you a little bit later to give us an update later on in the session. So I don't put you on the spot too much. I'm giving you a little bit of a heads up. Awesome. Thank you so much again to everybody for introducing yourself. Oh, Daniel, you didn't introduce yourself. I'm going to read your bio and do the whole thing in a little bit, but if you want to say hello, please, I'm sorry.
I'll say hello. You're about to hear a lot of me talking. Hello, everyone. It is a pleasure to be with you this morning. My name is Daniel List. I am the Executive Director of the New York Alliance for Careers and Healthcare, which is the healthcare public private partnership with New York City Government, recently with the Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development. So you're going to hear a whole lot of me talking. So I will, I will pause there and then you'll come back to me.
Awesome. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. I'm really eager for Daniel's presentation. So let's jump into it. I'm just going to quickly review our objectives today. And as we normally do, a quick reflection of where we've, where we've been and what we're doing. So objectives from today here from Niyach and Daniel, learn about their work and how it can strengthen what we're doing together as a network. We're going to review our work plan expectations and the progress of what we're doing as well as what's coming down the pipeline. And we're going to talk about the asset survey that I had sent out on Monday, and then we're going to talk about updates from one another to inform all the good things with where we are and where we're going. And as a reminder, in the previous meetings, you guys have identified that together, you would like to improve entry level jobs, complement each other's training, services, curriculum, and make cross network referrals. Partner for career pathways and create an advancement strategy, design and launch a marketing campaign, share best practices to connect with better quality jobs and employers and develop a policy agenda. And during our last meeting, we identified opportunities and key existing resources toward greater collaboration. We shared relevant updates and highlights and we affirmed the partnership development process and its value for building our network. And today we will be hearing from Niyach. Again, we're gonna, we're gonna go over the asset mapping survey and some of our goals and then we'll hear updates from each other and we'll, we'll close it up. Does that sound good, everybody? Awesome. Let's see here. So again, I am happy to formally introduce Daniel yet again, Executive Director from Niyach. Let me put up his bios. Everybody can check it out. I'll drop that in the, in the chat here in a moment too. But Daniel joined Niyach in 2018 and he's led strategic partnerships and initiatives across the inpatient ambulatory and long-term care subsectors. Daniel has also led Niyach's extensive emergency work throughout the pandemic and continues to shepherd essential programs. Prior to joining Niyach, Daniel worked in Human Resources at the Mount Sinai Health System, where he led workforce transformation for population health and supported HR strategy. He holds a Master of Arts in Social Organizational Psychology from Teachers College Columbia University and a Bachelor of Science in Learning and Organizational Change from Northwestern. Daniel, thank you again. I'm going to take my screen share down and pass the mic to you.
Thank you. Thank you. And hello, everyone. Also, I'll say, I think you are the first person to use my Twitter headshot and, and link in a bio like that. So that was fun. Usually it's just LinkedIn, which is way more boring. In any event, good morning, everyone. Let me see if I can share my screen. You'll tell me that you can see it properly. Yes. I'm seeing some head nods. That's great. So a few things just before I get started. The actually, a few things like moving the screen around so that I can see what I'm doing on my computer. All right. So I am going to be throwing a whole lot of information at you. I know that I'm about to do that. I know that there we could have an hour long conversation about any one of the things that I bring up. So a few things upfront. First off, you will get a copy of these slides. I will share them with Megan, who will share them out with everyone. There is more detail on the slides, including links to things. You are welcome to browse that on your own. If anything strikes your fancy. There are even a few slides in here. I'll, I'll mention them when we get there that I'm not going to talk about at all. They're just in here for your reference in case they are helpful. I will also share that ordinarily, I would say interrupt me if you have questions. But because there's so much information, I don't want us to get caught up in answering a question about something that happened really early on. When it might turn out that you all would prefer to spend all that time talking about something later. So I would suggest holding on to your questions and then prioritizing in your head what you want to talk about at the end. But that said, if something is really, really important, feel free to jump in or put something in chat and I'll see if I can expand on it in the moment. Generally speaking, I'm going to talk a little bit about Niyach, so you know who you're talking to. A bunch about the healthcare landscape and what's going on, both in healthcare and the local healthcare workforce. Of some about an opportunity that's coming down the pipe with Medicaid and Medicaid reform. There's a new version of Medicaid reform that we are anticipating. And then a little bit more about some of Niyach's work. And in particular, I want to highlight one project that we have done and recently released an industry brief or white paper on, because I think it's, it's sort of a good example of how really deep employer partnership on something can make something work. Whereas if you didn't have it, it wouldn't have worked at all. So hopefully that sort of makes sense as some signposts as we're going to go and I'll, I'll jump into things. So about Niyach, Niyach is a public private partnership, as I mentioned earlier, with New York City Government. We were founded in 2011, recently released a 10 year anniversary report. And originally Niyach was founded roughly after the passage of the Affordable Care Act as a intermediary, as a meeting place between all sorts of stakeholders in New York City's healthcare ecosystem. To make sure that as the system is changing, we were helping sort of nudge it in a better direction and could work on things together and collaboratively. It was formed originally in partnership with the New York City Department of Small Business Services. Recently, as of a couple of months ago, the mayor signed an executive order that among a whole bunch of other things related to workforce development, moved us from having our main partner be Department of Small Business Services to our main partner being the New York City Mayor's Office of Talent and Workforce Development, which is led by Executive Director Abby Jo Segal. So that's who you're talking to. What we do, we're, you know, like all the other kinds of intermediaries, we intervene, we convene, we help translate things between the healthcare sector and workforce development ecosystem and government and philanthropy and across all those sorts of boundaries. And then, of course, more recently, we've done a whole lot in emergency management, since we have been hit with the worst health crisis in 100 years, as, as all of us have been in emergency mode for, for a little while. Our partners, our Partners Council involves most major trade associations, as well as the 1190 Training and Employment Funds and CUNY. And then we have subsector advisory groups that are employer based, one for the inpatient ambulatory sector hospitals, et cetera. One for ambulatory and primary care and another for long-term services and supports. So I'm going to jump now into some healthcare, what's going on kind of things. What's healthcare reform? Why do we bother with this? Some of this may be familiar to you. So on the left, the chart on the left tracks healthcare spending as a percentage of GDP since 1980 up until 2019. And you'll note that most of those lines, this represents the top 11 high income countries. Most of those lines are roughly together. They're trending up, but they're more or less together. And then there's this giant red line on top that represents the United States that's going up faster than anything else. Right. And by the way, how much do we get out of paying all this for our healthcare system? Well, not a whole lot. The chart on right shows graphs performance against spending. So up and down is health system performance, left and right is healthcare spending and look at all of those countries that are mapped sort of and clustered sort of together. And then all the way on bottom right and bright red is the United States. Our healthcare system costs have been rising faster than inflation and faster than GDP growth. It's now almost about a fifth of the economy. In comparison to much less in other places and we get worse health outcomes for all of that extra money. So what's driving healthcare reform? That's really what's driving healthcare reform. We have to do better for everything. We have to do better for the money. We have to do better for the people, both the people that are served by it and the people that work in healthcare. So in 2007, the Institute for Healthcare Improvement came out with what they called the Triple Aim, which became this rallying cry for healthcare reform. And it really articulates three different things to focus healthcare reform around. One is the experience of care. For all of the people, the patients, all of us that have to interact with the healthcare system, let's make that better. The second is improving the health of populations. So not just improving the health of individual people, but saying, can we look at communities and can we improve the health of those communities? Can we reduce the rate of avoidable hospitalization? Or can, or uncontrolled diabetes in that population of people? And then can we reduce the per capita cost? As I mentioned earlier, we are just paying way too much for our healthcare. And so that is a rallying cry for healthcare reform. It caused a whole bunch of things that happened and I'm not going to talk about all of them, but a few things to highlight. I mentioned the passage of the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare in 2010. It also was the same sort of trend that created New York State's use of the Medicaid program through DISRIP Delivery System Reform Incentive Payment Program. Some of you may be familiar with or worked related to it. Which was the funneling of a whole bunch of money through Medicaid for system transformation in this direction. Continued shift away from a fee for service model, paying for every individual thing we do for people to a value based or performance payment kind of business model in healthcare. And with all of that, we have new technologies and new workflows and for the people, for the workforce, the stuff they're doing is different. Whether that's new skills that they need or conferences they need, or in some cases, new staffing models entirely, new occupations, new ways of configuring work. And so these are sort of the generalized trends that have been going on in healthcare for quite a while at this point. And I have to tell you, even with the pandemic, they are still front and center for healthcare reform and for those of us that are sort of working in the space. What does this look like for the healthcare workforce? So healthcare in New York City employs something like 750,000 people, as I mentioned, about a fifth of the economy. Healthcare employment has grown steadily in New York City. Take a look at the chart on the right. The blue line is healthcare. The orange line is all other sectors. Healthcare has gone up faster than everything else. And in many respects, healthcare has been insulated from downturns. You'll look for all the other sectors in the mid 2000s, then again in 2008, 2009, where jobs drop off and job growth drops off. And of course, in during the 2020 early days of the pandemic and healthcare has been pretty continuous in its growth. Although it was not as insulated from the pandemic as it has been from other economic downturns for some obvious reasons. And, and healthcare is really struggling in, in after the past couple of years. I'll also point out about diversity and equity and all of those sorts of things. At a macro level, our healthcare system looks great. We employ a whole lot of people and they reflect the diversity of our communities and our patient populations. But just like everywhere else, if you look under the hood, things don't look so great, the, the, the more granular you look, right? So there are real deep inequities around all of the normal lines, both for access to care for patients and quality of care, but also for the resources that businesses get and the resources that workers get. You can be sure that one of those main brand hospitals are getting a whole lot more resources and the people that work there get a whole lot more money in their pockets than people at a, at, at a small community clinic or in home care or nursing homes. So one of the big challenges in the healthcare sort of workforce ecosystem that Niyach has identified and that we try and, and work a lot around is what we call the barbell problem. Which basically is we have a whole lot of jobs on the low end, low end of the wage scale, as well as the educational attainment and a whole lot of jobs at the high end. But not a whole lot in the middle. And healthcare is really tightly bound, as I'm sure all of you know, to educational attainment. It's really hard to earn more money or advance in your career without getting not only an additional credential, but frankly, a degree, associate's degree, bachelor's degree, master's degree, et cetera. So a quick, and again, I'm sure these letters are way too small for you to read. You will get access to the slide deck afterwards. You can look at this. It's also on our website. But a quick look at what the barbell problem really means. So on the green is employment. As of 2018, the yellow is projected employment out to 2028. The light blue is average wages, average earnings. And then it's sort of going across the page, the first three require only a high school degree, like home health aides and personal care aides and nurse assistants. The next three require just a six months or two years, whether that's certification or associate's degree. And then the last two require a bachelor's degree and graduate degree respectively. And there just isn't a whole lot in that middle range. Where workforce development in a brief period of time can get brief up to two years, right? Can get people into sort of good family sustaining wage jobs. It, it, there's just not a lot there. And, and so we all are trying to figure out how do we grow the middle? How do we get people from one side to the other? How do we make the jobs at the low end better jobs, et cetera, et cetera? And really, it's a, it's a matter of both of those things, right? It's a, how do we, or all three? How do we get people all the way through? How do we make more and better and more stable in the middle? And how do we make the jobs at the low end better jobs or better paid jobs better? In the case of something like home care, better supervised jobs, better trained job, that are all of those things that we would normally care about to improve jobs. So let's talk about COVID a little bit and the impact of the pandemic. There were a handful of really big ticket impacts of the pandemic on the healthcare sector. So the first is to state the obvious and exacerbated inequities, just like everything else in this pandemic. And it will not shock any of you. The maps look the same, no matter what, what the maps are. The maps of the disease burden of asthma, diabetes, cardiovascular disease, substance use, any of these, these chronic illnesses or heavy sort of healthcare burden looks the same in New York City as the maps of job loss from the pandemic or COVID death or vaccine adoption. Or access to social services or healthy food options. Or poverty, or all of these sort of normal things, all of the maps look the same and the pandemic made everything worse. We also saw an intense strain on the workforce. It is not an exaggeration to say that healthcare really was the front line for, for all of this over the past couple of years and it has just been enormously challenging for workers, for the businesses that employ them to keep enough people, to keep people motivated. And I'm going to talk a whole bunch more on the next slide about sort of the causes of shortages and what shortages are really looking like, but it is it is really, I think the only word that, that captures it is despair at this point, the state of our, of our healthcare workforce. On the business side, businesses haven't fared all that well either. Businesses that had both higher costs and less revenue, things like paying for protective equipment. Or suddenly patients didn't want to care that they might otherwise were normally get. And of course, just like everything else, we see inequity, right? So the businesses that had more resources to start with or that served a, a population that had, that were either wealthier or had more resources or had better insurance. Those businesses have done comparatively better to the businesses that serve the most in need, who are really struggling to frankly, keep their doors open. And have been for the past two and a half years and some federal support helped that, but frankly, it was both not enough and it has dried up at this point. On the bright side, because I can't only be doom and gloom, we've seen a rapid adoption of telehealth, which has expanded to some extent, access to care in ways that, that was not available before. But of course, with telehealth requires things like access to broadband, because you can't talk to your doctor on Zoom if you yourself can't access Zoom, right? And on the workforce side, it takes different skills and competencies to work with telehealth modalities. I have a link later in the slide deck around this, but Niyach worked with the Great New York Hospital Association to create a curriculum guide for telehealth conferences, which you are all welcome to, to look at and see if you want to include any of the work you do. So I said I was going to come back to some shortages. So and I'll use nursing really as a prime example here. We had a bunch of things happen at the same time with the strain of the pandemic. So we have the real stress and burnout of working on the front lines of the pandemic. We have people that were not only burning out and disengaging, but saying I'm out, like I'm going to leave the healthcare workforce entirely. I'll go do something else. We had people retire earlier than was expected. And we have such shortages that when we bring people in, we don't even have the, the environment that can, that can support them when they first start their, their job and people are leaving. Sort of first year turnover is a lot higher than it should be, or even that it was before the pandemic. We also have things like, on the academic side, we have reduced enrollment in certain healthcare programs. It's also harder to get people through a program. Sometimes that's because of wraparound services, right? Helping people graduate with whatever is getting in their way. Sometimes though, it's, it's, it's some structural things like we don't have enough faculty or we have programs like in nursing where you are required to have on the job learning in a clinical placement or something like that. But the employers don't have the capacity that they used to, to bring people in or not as many people in. And so we don't have as many placement slots for people. All of this is sort of a a maelstrom of, of not great for our healthcare workforce. I will also point out one other thing which has abated a little bit, but not, not as much as, as we would like it to, which is just competition with other sectors and with other geographies. So for things like nursing, we see intense competition across the country. And especially earlier in the pandemic, when we had sort of wave after wave of infections sort of roll across the country. Right now, the average travel nurse or contract nursing rates in New York State are a little over $2,800 a week, which is high. But I have to tell you, earlier in the pandemic across the country, we were seeing for an experienced nurse, rates as high as over $10,000 a week. And I have to tell you, how in the world do you hold on to your talent when they can go work somewhere else for six months and pay for a house? I mean, it's just, it was just really crazy for a while and still is to an extent. And then we have other kinds of jobs like home care workers or lower wage jobs in healthcare, where the competition isn't other places in the country. The competition is other low wage sectors who are now paying more than they used to, like the restaurant industry, right? Or, or warehousing or transportation or whatever it is. I skipped the things in the middle of the slide. They, they sort of speak for themselves. Just the amount of burnout and mental health challenge that our healthcare workforce has sustained throughout this. Okay, I'm going to take a break, a breath rather, and I'm going to pivot to talk about some Medicaid things and some opportunities that I think this is going to afford for all of us and for the healthcare workforce. I'll also remind you of something I said earlier, which is you're going to get access to all of these slides. And I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you and we can talk for hours about any of these things. So to switch gears and talk about Medicaid. As some of you remember, or might have been involved with, there was a whole lot of effort and work that went in and money that went into Medicaid reform, starting in 2014. That program, which was called DISRIP, Delivery System Reform Incentive Payment Program, ended. um, ended in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, depending on how you stop the clock. Um, and yet, we are about to invest a whole lot of more money, assuming that the federal government approves um, through the Medicaid system in a similar sort of program. So first off, um, and this first bullet on, on this, this slide, just about Medicaid in New York City. Um, because of how the pandemic worked and some emergency rules worked, um, the Medicaid roles expanded dramatically, um, as a result of the pandemic by about twenty-five percent since February of twenty twenty. And we now have just about fifty percent, five zero, half of all New York City residents are enrolled in Medicaid. Literally half of the city is on Medicaid, and so when we're talking about changing or, or using funds through Medicaid to transform the system, it accounts for half of the system. Almost everyone involved in healthcare in New York City has some connection to Medicaid system. Um, just to give you a sense of scale, Medicaid funds roughly fifty, fifty-one billion dollars of economic activity in New York City every year. Um. Uh, so which outclasses many other industries in and of themselves, right? And we're just talking Medicaid. Um, in terms of what the, the state is currently negotiating with the federal government and what we anticipate to start, probably starting January this coming year, um, will be a thirteen and a half billion dollar five-year investment in um, healthcare transformation through the Medicaid system. I'm gonna talk about what a, how that money breaks down on the next slide, but it is, it is frankly, it is basically double the scale of investment that we had last time. It is much more focused in terms of, of equity and addressing social determinants of health and social service related stuff. Um, and it will, um, it includes, and I'll, I'll, I'll go into this in a little bit more detail. It includes one point five billion dollars over five years for workforce development. Um, and that will be largely unrestricted funds, um, which frankly blows out of the water all other sort of scale of investment in workforce development for the next handful of years. Again, this is assuming that the federal government approves it, but we have reason to believe that that will, will in fact, um, happen. So how does the money break down? Um, about three hundred million of it uh is for regional planning. I will tell you in New York City, that will probably go to the New York City Health Department, although we don't know that for sure yet. Um, uh, about eight hundred and sixty million will go for regional coordination for social services. I'll come back to that in just a moment. Um, uh, another six and three-quarter billion dollars will be for um value-based payment projects and one and a half billion for care quality. That is roughly eight billion dollars that is equiv- analogous to the last desert program. It will go to the same kinds of places like large healthcare systems. You'll go to the same kinds of projects like reducing the rate of diabetes in a population. Um, and it will be sort of roughly structured in the same kind of way, although we won't see the creation of some of those networks, the way that we used, that we saw last time. Instead, we will be relying on the networks that already exist. But that's what that bullet sort of refers to, that eight billion dollars, it's roughly DISREP two point out. Then there's gonna be one and a half billion dollars for workforce development. I just mentioned that. Um, about three-quarters of billion dollars um that are specifically for criminal justice involved populations. We don't know exactly how that's gonna flow yet, but it is sort of clearly articulated in the state's plans. About one and a half billion for supportive housing, same thing. We don't know exactly how that's going to work, but we know that it is a clear and funded priority um from the state, assuming the federal government approves it. Um, and then about three hundred million dollars for some investments in technology. I'll mention that that will not be the only investments in technology. Some of these other money will go towards technology, but this is technology that will be done directly by this, uh, uh, the State Department of Health. Um, I said I was gonna come back to this regional coordination for social services. What the state's plan is, again, if the federal government approves it, is um the creation of what they're calling social determinants of health networks. Um, and these will be networks of social service organizations that are not medical, but have an impact on people's health. Think, uh, frankly, think social service nonprofits, right? Anything from putting an air conditioning unit in someone's home, because that uh, 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 keeps them healthier to um, uh, delivering meals to legal services, to houses, I mean, social services, right? And the idea is that this money will go to these networks. I couldn't tell you how many networks there will be in New York City, but there will be some number of them um, that will organize the social service nonprofits together. And then as a group, those places can invest in infrastructure together and will be able to contract with the healthcare systems of the world for access to the funds that the, the, or the regular healthcare dollar, if you will, right? Um, this is a, a more deliberate attempt by the state government to include social services. Um, by the way, which includes employment services, right? To include social services um in the regular healthcare dollar, because we know that social services have such an impact on people's health. Um. That's about as much as I know about that. I'm happy to answer questions later, but there, there's only so much detail at the moment. In terms of workforce development, the workforce development money, that one and a half billion, will flow through organizations called workforce investment organizations. Um, there uh are a limited number of workforce investment organizations that are currently um designated as such by the state. We do not know if the state will designate other organizations to be workforce investment organizations. Um, I will also say that uh you should ask all of your workforce investment organization questions to your PHI uh, um, colleagues, because PHI actually runs one of these things uh, and has lots of experience in what it means and, and what it was. We don't know exactly what it will be going forward. Um, regardless, and I know I'm repeating myself, but one and a half billion dollars is a huge amount of money, and it will completely change the game um, uh, over the next five years, assuming that it actually happens. Um, including places like the eleven ninety-nine Training Employment Funds, who I'm sure you've all had, had interactions with in the past. They are also a workforce investment organization. Um, and they will have access, like PHI and like other places, to a scale of funds um for healthcare workforce development that is different in, in, in magnitude um than what uh you might get from a, a small grant from an, uh, from a philanthropy or from government or something like that. Doesn't mean those players that are historically funders won't still be in the mix, but this will sort of flip it on its head for a little while. Okay, another deep breath. I'm gonna talk about Naish for a minute. Um, so I'm not gonna tell you everything we've ever done. Um, that would, would, would be a waste of, of all of our time. Um, uh, what I will say is we have a lot of information on our website. We have a lot of information in our ten year anniversary report. Um, and uh, this slide deck, though I will not talk about every slide, has some case study information about some uh workforce innovations that we've worked on. Um, uh, we also have done a lot in the way of research and publications, including some core competencies and some work uh, in emergency response in the pandemic. Um, again, questions about any of this, I'm happy to talk about, but, but frankly, I would suggest go taking a look at our, our website and, and other reports and, and things like that. Um, a bit about our process uh around, especially around workforce uh, um, innovation. It starts with the industry need. It starts with what's actually going on in the sector. Um, and then figuring out who the hell we are gonna be in this process, whether that is a subject matter expert or convener or direct funder of something. Um, and then we work through the process with all of our partners to actually be thoughtful about designing something and then seeing if it works, um, and then sharing it with, with folks if it does, and if it doesn't, telling you what, what our, what our experience was. And perhaps you shouldn't do that kind of thing. Um, uh, on our website and our ten year anniversary report, we have a bunch of, of case studies. Here are some of those topics. Um, uh, including around home cares. The Certified Peer Recovery Advocate is a substance use peer, people that work with people with, with substance use disorders. Um, biological medical assistant, nursing, um, work we did with high school students, uh, including we have an open source toolkit, about a hundred different tools for educators and employers and um, students and mentors and that sort of thing that you are welcome to use. I'm happy to share the link both separately, and it is also in the slide deck. Um, and then uh, what I would like to spend some time with you right now, talking about is our experience with health coaches. Um, just because I think it's a good sort of uh illustration of how deep employer involvement sort of makes or breaks this kind of thing. So I'm gonna skip ahead. These are all slides that you'll have access to later. Um, so first off, what in the world is a health coach? So a health coach is, um, it is an upgraded medical assistant. Uh, so if you think so traditional workforce development, it's a next step after that. It's a higher wage than a medical assistant, requires some of the same basic skills, but is particularly a member of the care team um in primary care settings that works with certain kinds of patients and helps engage them in their own care to improve uh various sort of different health outcomes. These are kinds of patients that are not your hardest to work with, but also not your easiest. It's the kind of the middle of a risk stratification of, of how, how in need your patients are. Um, so Naish, uh, this goes back to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and some of the money frankly, came from the last Medicaid reform project, ISREP. Um, worked with Community Care Brooklyn, which is a network of employer partners in Brooklyn. Um, and figured out that this kind of occupation would be a good fit both for the workforce needs of their community as well as the health outcomes that they were trying to drive towards. And so we worked with Community Care of Brooklyn to create this model, to create a comprehensive workforce development program. I'm not gonna talk about the sort of details of the training. You can read about that if, if, if you'd like. But we worked with Kingsborough Community College to create um a training program. It uh gave people six college credits if they wanted to use them afterwards. Um, as I mentioned, that there was a wage increase when people came back and work. And since twenty sixteen, actually, Naish funded the first two cohorts. Um, the employer partner network funded the next fourteen, and they're still going. Uh, so there have been sixteen cohorts to date, about two hundred and sixty health coaches have finished the program and have been working in the, with patients directly with i- in, in care teams and on the ground. Um, since then, including an emergency response over the past couple of years. Um, but here's the thing I really wanna talk about, which is this is a new occupation that hadn't been used in, in these primary care settings before or in this, this employer network. Um, and so it wasn't sufficient for us to just do a training program, right? Because you have, you can have the smartest, most talented, most trained workers in the world, and if they walk into a team environment and no one on the team knows what they can contribute, they're not gonna be able to do the work, right? No one's gonna keep them and, and, and they're not gonna stay um for, or, or the staffing model won't stay for any length of time. And so what we did with Community Care of Brooklyn was really implement some, some change management strategies. So the first one, of course, is comprehensive workforce development and ongoing professional development. Um, we also looked at the money related to, to, to all of this. So the employer network, not us, um, decided to provide financial incentives to the primary care practices themselves, right? So not at the central level, but the actual uh, the doctors, the business units. Um, whoever was looking at a profit and loss statement, gave financial incentives. They gave wage um subsidies for these workers. They gave financial incentives for process measures, like you have to use these people, and these people have to go out and talk to patients. And they gave financial incentives for performance, like if you reduce the rate of un, uh, uncontrolled diabetes in your population using this kind of worker. Right? So we're gonna pay you to do it better, and we're gonna pay you to use the, the new worker that we're giving you. And by the way, the worker we're giving you is highly skilled, right? They also did a bunch of, of the communications related stuff, change management. Um, they created a guiding coalition, the empowered executive sponsors. They worked with superstar supervisors, um, and on the ground advocates. They had conferences and um quarterly meetings and, and case conferences and all of these things to celebrate small wins and to get momentum to adopt this new model. They also created a bunch of new technology and enabling technology, instead of just saying, yeah, your, your, your health coaches should go work with all of these patients. They said, well, here's some analytics. Here are the hundred patients that I want them to go work with. Here is where you log what you, what you get with them, so that, so that we can all collaborate on this, in this person's um, health record, right, on, uh, in this person's care team. Um, they then embedded all of these changes into policies and standard practices and workflows and checklists. Uh, they worked on a long-term financial planning for this, so that there was a sustainable world. Um, they weren't just taking this new thing, and then as soon as you let go of the rubber band, it snaps back. They actually worked on how do we keep this and how do we make it work for people so that they want to keep it? Um, and importantly, all of this not only was good for the worker and good for the patient, but it changed the mindset and behavior of the members of the care team. You know, one of my favorite stories around this was they had, um, let's call him a, a, a particularly curmudgeonly doctor um, who didn't wanna be involved with this, didn't wanna adopt anything new, stop bothering me, I know how to care for my patients. Like, you can imagine the type, right? And um, so what they decided was, instead of writing, writing this person off, and, and in consultation with, with Naish, instead of writing this person off, they said, you know what? Let's put a superstar health coach, like one of our best, with the doctor next door. And then over time, the doctor next door and that health coach was really making a difference in patients' lives, and the curmudgeonly doctor sort of looked at that and said, well, why can't I have one of those? That looks really great. It looks like it's doing something really important for, for people. It's making my colleagues' life easier. It's making my patients' lives better. Um, and so now, instead of being your, your sort of stereotypical, I don't wanna change, now they're asking for the change, right? It's stuff like that that made an occupation like this stick. And so what the thing I really wanna say is to all of you is the, we are, especially with Medicaid, we are about to embark in a lot of investment in a lot of these kinds of occupations, like community health worker, for example, or health coach or care manager, um, or peer worker, patient navigator, any of these sort of newer roles in healthcare. And they are important, and you will hear all of the politicians say that they were, that we're doing it, and there's lots of money for it and everything else. But these jobs, as you probably have, have, have encountered already, um, are not super stable, because they're not part of the standard business practice yet. And if you are going to work with them, you have to work with an employer partner, either who themselves are already excited or with your coaching can get more excited and more involved in the actual change of this. Because it's one thing to train a nurse. You wanna help a nurse through, through college and, and become a registered nurse. They'll get a job. It's great for everyone. It's great for the sector. We have shortages in this. It'll improve everyone's lives. Uh, go for it. You wanna train someone to be a community health worker or a health coach or a care navigator or a peer worker, you've gotta have an employer um partner who is willing not just to hire them, but to do the hard work on their side of bringing that person in to the care team. Um, uh, and by the way, I've talked a bunch about sort of hospital or primary care related titles. This is true everywhere. It's the same holds true, and Amy, I'm sure you, you can echo this um, in home care, where you do things, the, the PHI Care Connection Senior Aid Model is the same way. It's a great next step for people. It's great for patients. It doesn't work if the employer doesn't embrace it, doesn't do the change work to incorporate this new staffing model into their, their world. So, um, I'm gonna skip over the last couple of things here. I'll just say in closing what Naish's priorities are. Um, so, and this is articulated in our ten year anniversary report. So first and foremost, we have to deal with the immediate shortages, like in nursing. Um, second, we'd have to use some of this opportunity, like in Medicaid, um, to make these middle wage jobs more stable and better and more of them and more pathways into them. We also don't wanna lose sight of job quality for lower wage workers, especially for home care workers. Um, we desperately need more and better data and analytics, um, so we know where to invest our time and effort and energy. Um, and then we wanna make sure that there's still career mobility and that we're talking about common competencies and things like telehealth, or like I mentioned with our, with high school students. Because it's just not true that you only do he- healthcare workforce development at an academic level, right? Or once they're already in the workplace, like you also do it earlier, like in high schools, or like people that haven't been in the healthcare workforce yet. Um, and so providing some mobility through common competencies is really a key strategy of ours. All right, with that, I am gonna stop talking, um, and pass it back off to all of you. I threw a lot of information at you. What jumps out at you that is particularly either thought provoking or that you'd like to pick my brain about while you have me? Uh, and while you're all thinking, I'm gonna step away just for a moment to open the window.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments? I I have one, but I don't want to step on, this is your guys' time, so I don't want to speak first. So welcome any of your questions and comments for Daniel while he's with us.
Also, I'm just going to keep smiling at you until someone talks.
That's my MO usually too. Well, I can ask a question. Um I know you said it's very likely, but could you talk a little bit more about what why you think or what the likelihood of the Medicaid workforce development request being passed at that one point five billion dollar level? Um if you could just talk a little bit more about what is and why you think so?
Yeah, so um Medicaid is a federal program, but it is run at the state level. Uh and so the state basically makes almost all of the rules um related to Medicaid, but they have to get approval for a bunch of things with the federal government. Um and there are certain things that are sort of normal business in Medicaid and there are other things that require a special waiver. And so um this new thing that's happening, um just like dessert before it, is all done under the banner of a waiver amendment, it's called an eleven fifteen waiver. Um and New York State has an eleven fifteen waiver that is active, they've extended it. Um but they need to uh 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 get approval for this new addition of of all of this investment and different kinds of of stuff that's going to happen under this. Um that requires the federal government's approval. Um the they submitted a similar request under the Trump administration, which was rejected. They submitted a request a year ago or not a not a request, they submitted a concept paper. Uh we're thinking of doing this, let's do it, right, to the federal government, that was seventeen billion dollars. The federal government responded with some negotiation stuff and they've now settled on thirteen and a half billion dollars. So it has already gone through some round of the federal government's uh discussion. Um it has also gone through a public comment period and they've changed some of the numbers around within that, but they did not change workforce development, they kept it at the same one and a half billion dollars. Um and they doubled down on the mechanism of of investing those uh workforce dollars through the workforce investment organizations. There were some open questions from that during the public comment period and and the state has said, nope, this is how we're going to do it. So um it is now in final submission to the federal government. Uh federal uh centers for Medicaid and Medicare Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. Um and we are expecting the federal government to approve it basically um by the end of the year, um which is why I said roughly January, we should start to maybe see some uh actual money activity happening. Um if the federal government, the federal government has approved similar waiver amendments in other states within the past couple of months, so it is encouraging. Um and uh while it is possible that some things may change, like the amount of of money for social services or housing, that sort of thing. Um we are really not expecting a change either in the the scale of money or in the way it's going um in the workforce dollars. Amy, you definitely know something I don't, please jump in.
Oh, no, I don't. No, no, no. I was I was raising my hand to ask you a question after you're done. Nope.
So that's the story with this with this waiver amendment and um where it is right now. We don't know for sure, but it is encouraging and at this point I would put money on um something like this being approved at a similarly enormous scale. I mean, honestly, even if it's one point two billion instead of one and a half billion, like it's still insane. I mean, Disrep, if any of you got funds through Disrep Workforce Development, either directly from a a healthcare network um or through a place like the eleven nine nine train employment funds indirectly, Disrep workforce invested across the state something between three hundred and four hundred million dollars in total over five years. And frankly, I was, I when I was at Mount Sinai, I was one of those workforce leads. It was like, how in the world are we going to spend all this money? This is three times that scale in the same period of time. I I mean, it is, it is really just insane. Um anyway, I'll stop there. Uh Amy?
Hi, um so I just shared for anybody that wants to really walk out on the eleven fifteen I just shared on PHI's written comments, um which we submitted to CMS, they're currently in oh no, they just closed the comment period yesterday, I think. Um and so we submitted those written comments, all of our comments were are focused on that workforce piece pretty much. Um and it and so those comments are directed to see CMS. We also attached the comments that we submitted to um New York when they were in their combat period around the eleven fifteen waiver. But seriously, like I'm just throwing that in there in case anybody wants. Go, go deep, go for it.
Yeah, I I sorry, if I can just jump in for a moment, I will, I will share that while the current state's plan is better than plans we've seen before in terms of caring about equity and caring about social services, it is not perfect and it is not great, right? So like, we still don't have major investments in long term care, for example. Um we're not called out in the way that it should. And there are a whole bunch of other things like that where they'll slip it in, but it's not where like chunks of money and governance is going.
Right. And that's a lot of what we kind of we advocated particularly around the the direct care workforce in long term care and calling that out through the waiver. But I had two questions for you, Daniel. One is, um I heard a rumor that um CMS is like way backlogged and said this waiver may not be approved for a year, like until twenty twenty four. Are you hearing? I I mean, you sound more optimistic.
Well, that's news to me.
I just, it's a rumor.
I I will definitely go back and ask the people that I I know have access to rumors of how they feel about uh such a rumor. Um I here's, here's my gut instinct, though. Um I think that uh I think that something will be approved before the end of the Biden administration. I don't think they will let that go. And I suspect that, I mean, this is a large amount of money. Um and yes, it requires some oversight, right, and approval mechanism. This is not the first that CMS has seen of New York State's plan. Um and all of those politicians who like to invest in things and then go on the campaign trail to set to tell everyone how much they invested and how much they cared. Um I suspect that they will try and do something before those same politicians have to go back on the campaign trail. Whether that means um it will happen in the timeframe, I'm hoping, and which we were expecting in the next few months, or whether it will be later, who knows? Um but uh but I I so could it be a year? Maybe, but I I wouldn't expect it to be more than a year and frankly, I expect it to be sooner. That's my instinct at least.
Good, I hope so. Um and I was just curious, you know, you talked about um how integrating those new jobs is really critical to their success.
Yeah.
Like, how does that happen? Like, like, we all, we all know that that has to, you know, be integrated into this, but like, how? What's the accountability around that and and how how does that get implemented?
So I I have a very particular perspective on this and I'm sure you can find someone else that that has another perspective. But I firmly believe it is by the employer, by the employer's effort and that it is a change management practice. It is about changing people's behavior and some of it is is structural things like putting in new financial models and technologies and all of these this stuff that is it it um uh you know, I um I'm going to steal this from a conference I went to a few years ago. But um it's a whole lot easier to get an elephant to walk down a path that's already laid out for them than sitting on top of the elephant and trying to convince it to go one way or the other, right? So some of it's stuff like that. Um but some of it is the hard work of like change leadership at the in at the service delivery level, right? And what I don't want to happen is for workforce development organizations, like all of you, to embrace it as your burden to get a service delivery, healthcare service delivery organization to adopt a new staffing model and that they think, oh, it's just, it's just the workforce people, they'll make it happen. No, right? Can you be experts? Absolutely. Can you help be the beginning of that work? Can you contribute some of it, like how to work with people, how to train the people? Totally, right? But it is a, it is a burden and responsibility of the employer to adopt a new staffing model, just like adopting a new technology or a new business model. Um and just like everything else, I'm going to go very market based here for a moment. Um at a policy level, we are changing the the financial incentives in healthcare. We're saying you can only per uh keep your doors open if you perform against certain performance measures, frankly, and if you can't, then you'll close, right? Um you won't be able to perform, you won't be able to earn enough revenue. And we're saying that all these new staffing models are good for you to perform against that. Some organizations will take that up and already have and some more will do so going forward and they'll do it really well, like the example I've just shared. And some of them will not, they'll treat this as a side project. Um and they'll see it in their bottom line and there's only so much you can do about that from from your vantage point.
Actually, um wanted to also comment. Um yeah, as we're talking about this, it's kind of making me think about, okay, if if there's this new model being in implemented, um it's hard, right? Especially when something is established, like you said, because when we're used to something, it's very hard to just restructure that. Because we're so used to a certain way. And also, like, for example, a lot of us are nonprofits, we have to think about funding and we have to we have to consider like the criteria for our funders and numbers before we can make certain decisions and it affects how we restructure. Um so I guess also if we're thinking about accountability and also adding on the fact that a lot of healthcare per um workforces or a lot of healthcare sectors, it's hard to engage with them because they have certain expectations or like there's higher turnover rates. So in implementing this, how are we addressing that turnover rate? How how is that money being used to, I guess, incentivize workers to stay for wh- what is happening when it comes to turnover? Because that's always going to exist, healthcare is hard. Nurses kind of get tired because they feel like they work a lot and they're not making enough. So what what's being addressed for employees?
Yeah, uh they're turnover is fundamentally an employer problem, just like adopting a staffing model. Um there are definitely things that that can help, like Niyach runs um the program with uh twenty eight hospitals in the city for new graduate nurses in their first year of clinical practice to help them sort of stay in in the work and stay in the profession. Uh this had some success, but just like everything else, training is not the the fix to a a crash course in a new job that you decide two months later that wasn't for you, right? Um so I I don't know is the the best answer to your to to your question. I um what I would say is that there are some occupations that the healthcare system is desperate for and they will on their own try and figure out how to retain them. Nurses is a good example, right? But respiratory therapy is another one, right? Things that we are just, we just do not have enough of right now. Um uh and they will be a willing partner with you and they will do things on their own and they'll build into union contracts and they'll do lots of stuff. And then there are other occupations like community health worker, to health code, like some of these things, where retention is not just about how hard the job is, but about whether the care team members are willing to work with the person, right? Whether the doctor is willing to collaborate with the community health worker. And that, before you go into bed with an employer, try engage whether they are serious um about doing the work of incorporating that or whether it's just like a fun project for them and they they have some magical thinking, like if you give me a well-trained community health worker, it'll fix my problems. Like, that's not how that works.
Yeah, I wanted to um to comment, so I worked with eleven ninety nine um in the population health department um for a little bit, so I recognized you, Daniel. You spoke at our symposium. Um I think it was twenty seventeen, I'm not sure. It's it's all a, it's all a blur now, but um I was interested to know like how you feel that this district two point O, right? Yeah, will be different. Um you know, I think, you know, the progress with the health coach and um the health coach program um is amazing because I remember when, you know, that was being formed and it's really interesting to hear that there's still some confusion around like these titles of health coach, care navigator, because they weren't um the standard titles, they still aren't. Um but I think the needle has been moved a little bit, but how far do you think it has been moved? And and do you feel that district two point O will will be the catalyst for this continual change?
Okay, so there are two different questions in there. One is, how do I think this new reform will be different from the last one? The second is whether um uh how far we've moved the needle on adopting some of these new occupations. Um I'll do the second one first. Um not far enough. Uh there are places who have accepted these occupations into their new business model and they're using it to perform. Um but it is not widespread, it is still largely grant funded in many respects, right? It's still a unstable unfunded workforce in in many cases. Um uh and we are still stuck in some of the same places we have been forever, as I'm sure you are acutely aware, which is you go to the people with money and you say, we want to do a thing and they say, great, show me the data. And you say, well, I can't have the data unless I do the thing. Um and they say, okay, so how about you pilot it? We're like, fine, we'll do a pilot, here's the data from the pilot. And then the people with money say, well, it wasn't at scale enough for us to really believe that we're going to do it. So we're just not going to do this at all. Why don't you do another pilot with someone else? Right? Over and over and over and over and over and over again. Um and I don't know how to break out of this, I'm just mad about it, right? But um I maybe this next round of of Medicaid reform will force some of these things um be able to do. I I I will say, we have one example that worked really well, um which was in the Certified Peer Recovery Advocate role, that's a substance use peer. So these are people that have um lived experience of substance use, helping other people through their recovery journey. And what happened was back in twenty fifteen, the state put a little bit of standardization in the educational requirements, not something that was hard to achieve, but a little bit of standardization. And they increased the revenue, the reimburse, the Medicaid reimbursement rates um for that occupation. And as a result, we created a more comprehensive training program and we saw wider spread adoption, right? Because the state from a policy level said, actually, this is going to be part of our standard business now, right? Um so maybe that will happen the next time. I will say I'm not super encouraged, though, because the state's current plan for Medicaid talks about community health workers all the way from Sunday, but only talks about it about from a workforce perspective. They don't talk about it from a business model or revenue perspective. And lots of money for training and not a lot of money for salaries. So we will see, but I I fingers crossed, I think, is is where that is. To answer your first question, how do I think it will be different? Um it's different in in really two fundamental ways or three, maybe if I include workforce. Um the first is that of the thirteen and a half billion dollars, eight billion is for basically desert two point O, the same money to the same kinds of people doing the same kinds of things. And then there's all this other money for other things, like social service networks, like uh um supportive housing, like justice involved communities. Um and so that's just fundamentally different. It's money to different people about different topics, trying to address different, frankly, equity related issues. Um in terms of the money that's going to the same places, those places are more mature and will, on the other hand, be more opaque to everyone because there won't be a list of all of the net, all of the employer networks um the way there was in Disrep. There were twenty five of them in the state, we knew who they were, we knew with the context where I was one of the workforce contacts in for twenty five. We won't know that this time. So in some ways, it will be better because it will be closer to the work of providing healthcare, like the the actual business. In other ways, it will be hard. providing healthcare, like the, the actual business. In other ways, it will be harder for all of us to engage with them. And then on workforce development, um, the big, big difference is that the healthcare service delivery networks will not control the workforce dollars. They'll have their own money, they might invest their own money in workforce, I would expect them to. But they will not control the workforce dollars. Instead, the workforce dollars will be controlled by organizations like the eleven nine nine training employment funds, like PHI. Right? These organizations who have the ability to have longer ter- longer term horizons and investments, right? But it will be divorced from like different people, they will barely even talk to each other, un- unless they are forced to, right? Um, about how to use those, those workforce dollars.
Thank you so much.
Anything else on anyone's mind?
I had one last question, if that's okay with everybody. Um, I know last week, uh, not last week, last month when we met, we had started talking about, um, you know, the push towards the remote work, towards flexible scheduling, towards four day work weeks, et cetera. So we all know what that is. And we started a conversation that we didn't have a solution for, but it was brought up about how can the healthcare sector respond to some of these worker interests like that while being an in-person based industry, like what? From your perspective, is there anything that could?
It's a great question, um. And it's going to be really clunky figuring it out over the next few years, I think is the way, the way for me to say this. Just like everything else, the more, the jobs that can be done at a desk will be more remote or more hybrid. Um, you, there are ways to be a remote nurse, but you can't be a bedside nurse remote, right? Um, you can't be a home care worker remote, although there are remote jobs related to home care. Hi, so, a- and I will also say, because there's a lot of buzz about things like telehealth, um, which will be a great virtual modalities for your healthcare. It takes the same people, like, if you're talking to your doctor on the phone, or if you're talking to them in person, it takes the same doctor. Same doctor's time, right? The same shortage of healthcare workers, doesn't matter what medium they're talking to you with. Um, and cutting down on commute doesn't cut down that much, doesn't give us that much slack. So I don't know, um, I, I think that healthcare is fundamentally a business about care. And most of those jobs are in person are not going to become virtual anytime soon. But there might be ways where organizations can in, in- increase flexibility, like more use of, of, of sort of part-time per diem. I get some concern if we start talking about creating a gig economy in something like heavily unionized healthcare nursing. Really, it's, it, we got some challenges with something like that. But otherwise, like, it will be an inequitable thing. The, uh, um, you can have an executive sit in the Hamptons and do their job, but you cannot have a floor nurse, right? So, right, we'll see.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking similarly to you, but I just wanted to hear if there is anything else to throw in the mix.
I don't think so. Uh, it is, I mean, healthcare, it's about a fifth of the economy, right? I mean, there are, you could, you could be a lawyer, you could be a computer programmer, I mean, you could be anything in healthcare. So there are lots of jobs that can be just like every other sector, um, hybrid, virtual, et cetera. Um, but some of those in-person care jobs, like they're in-person care.
Right. Thank you for that. Anybody else have questions, comments, thoughts? Before we say thank you to, to Daniel for joining us. I will take that as a no.
Okay.
So, thank you.
My pleasure. It was delightful to talk with all of you. As I said now, I don't know seventeen times. Um, I will share the slides with Megan, who will give them to all of you. Um, and feel free either to reach out with any questions, or if you want to see if we can try and do something together. Um, I, I, I don't have anything off the top of my head, but it is our job. Uh, NIAH's job with the, the mayor's office of talent and workforce development to be an intermediary for healthcare and the workforce development ecosystem. Um, so feel free to, to reach out to us. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
So, it's eleven twenty. We have a couple of things that I, I want to talk with you guys about. Would a five to five-ish minute break be useful? Yeah, I see head nods. Okay, so let's be back at eleven twenty-six, six-minute break. Sound good? Thanks. Oh, right. Amy, you turned your camera back on like eleven twenty-six on the dot. I loved it.
That's how I roll here.
I like how we both did this. I need that in the morning. Thank you for that.
A little, a little something, a little something, that's right for you, Megan, right there.
Thank you. What a gift. Can you see that? Okay. We may have lost a couple of people, but that's okay. All right, so you guys have seen our five I process, this is what we go through, uh, when developing partnerships and networks together. You guys have seen this and we've talked about it, I'm going to move quickly through this. You saw, you've also seen this, um, this page here. So we're in the investigation phase or the investigate phase of the jobs first process, which is that first portion of the five I's. Um, so what does it mean to be in the investigate phase? You'll see here, all the things that are in green are, are tasks that we've done or in, are ongoing that we've actively started. And the text in black there assess programs and resource needs is kind of where we are. We've done some work in this capacity, but that's, that's our big last task before we move out of the investigate phase and into the next. So in assessing programs and resource needs, asset mapping being one of those activities, um, we want to do that to allow for informed initiative design and an understanding of our service gaps. We want to answer, you know, what are resources, how are they utilized, who does what, all those good things that we've kind of already started a conversation around. So, to that point, assessing our resource needs, what have we done? We have a couple new, um, names coming in the room, so I just want to review real quick. Um, we've taken steps forward, and this is what we've done. We've assessed and discussed barriers. In previous meetings, we discussed potential barriers our clients face, organization, system varies, barriers. Um, I'm going to drop a link in a moment to the document that captured those discussions, in case anybody wants to refresh on that. We also explored and discussed opportunities and ideas on how to solve for those barriers we, we brainstormed around. And in the last session, we voted on some priority interests around those ideas that we came up together by ranking what we can and want to accomplish together. That's the activity we did in mural. And let me drop this link in the chat for anybody who hasn't seen this. I lost my checkbox. Sorry. Navigating two screens and it's a fun adventure. Here we go. So that's the barriers and discussion, just for review, if anybody wants to check that out. Um, and speaking about our mural voting session last month, I wanted to show the top four things that, uh, we, we prioritized. So with five votes, building stronger employer partnerships to strengthen the program to job pipeline by encouraging collaborative sector and employer engagement, seemed we had a lot of consensus around that. And then with three votes, we had three items that were tied, which are continue thinking about how the network can solve for workers' desire for remote work. Knowing healthcare will never be fully remote. Advocate for increased wages and improved health and safety in healthcare, create new pipelines for recruitment. Use this partnership to make cross-network referrals. So the other items either receive two or one vote, so that tells us this group prefers to prioritize these four items on the screen here, but it doesn't mean we're not going to overlook those other things we've been talking about and, and been working on. Um, so that's just my brief review of where we are up until this moment. I'm talking fast so we don't run out of time. There any questions, thoughts, or further thinking about what I've shared about our work together thus far? Sound good? Awesome. So that brings me to the asset map stuff. So, the purpose of the survey is to identify the networks, available resources, and potential gaps in services. And I had a whole activity planned, but I'm just going to streamline and say the responses to the surveys and all the other work we've done so far, we will synthesize and present back to you to use as a starting off point for the next phase, where we'll get a little bit more streamlined. We'll create a logic model, all that kind of stuff, and get more specific about what we want to do and how we're going to do it, and what's the timeline. So, there's that. This QR code will bring you to the asset survey. Um, I wanted to kind of quickly run through so we could get to this. I know not everybody's had a chance to fill it out, which is totally okay. Amy also sent over some questions yesterday. I want to let you know, Amy, that I did update it to include PHI related answers to some of the questions. I'm, I really apologize, but I appreciate any and all feedback. Where, um, the sectoral employment projects are new for us, so we're using some of our resources and updating them, so all feedback is really helpful. Um, did anybody else have questions about this survey that we sent out on Monday? Who here has filled it out so far? I've had three responses. Thank you. So we got Cypress Hills, okay. Would it be helpful just to actively, in this moment, while we have this time scheduled for ourselves, for the people who haven't filled it out to look at it and fill it out, so you don't have to do homework after the meeting? Would that be helpful?
I, I, I filled it out on behalf of Cypress Hill, so I don't know if the other team members need to actually, unless you want, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions or want to take time to, to fill it out? I just need a yes or no. If not, it's fine, I'll move on. Daniel? You're good, right? Okay, I'm just going to move forward, so we can chit chat. Perfect, thanks. I just saw you given, given me a smile, so I wanted to hear your voice. Thank you. Um, so I'm going to keep moving forward, because I'm not hearing, uh, does a huge need to fill out the survey at the moment, so I'll share it out after the meeting as well. So, what's coming down the pipeline? Next, we're moving into this, um, imagined phase with goal setting, defining our partnership model and creating a theory of change and logic model. So like I said before, streamlining all the conversation and research and different things we've been doing, and making an actionable plan around those conversations and the goals that you guys have set forth and will finalize in this next phase. So, as you see on my screen here, the key activities of this next phase are to identify gaps and opportunities, which we've already begun tapping into. Define and inter- determine the partnership model our net- our network will structure itself around. Engage the sector in developing solutions. Continue to gather local and national ideas of practice, develop a logic model or theory of change for the network's purpose, work and functioning, and define the network's governance structure based on the chosen partnership model. So that's what's coming down the pipeline that we're going to be collaborating with you guys on and guiding you guys through that. How does the process sound to you? What are your reactions to where we are? What does it leave you thinking about? Any thoughts? I'm going to pull a Daniel and just smile at you until somebody has anything to say. Thank you, Terry. Awesome. So this is good, we're affirmed. I appreciate it. So now, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And I'm going to turn it over to you guys, because you've heard enough of me talking in here. If anybody has any updates specifically looking at you, Cypress Hills, to tell us about your new workforce center, um, or any other exciting things going on, or things that have popped up to you guys since our last meeting that you want to highlight for the group. Cypress Hills, if you want to kick us off and tie the group.
Sure. So last night, um, we had an evening on Chestnut, um, our new workforce uh, development center is on Chestnut Street in, um, East New York, Cypress Hills, Brooklyn. And so we had a lot of friends of Cypress Hill stakeholders, um, community residents, participants. Um, you know, come and celebrate with us. We had wonderful food from Collective Fair, which is a partner, um, and has like a cafe here, and we had live music um, from the Brooklyn Conservatory of Music, who also will be, um, having classes here. So it was just, it was really great to see this space, um, filled with a lot of new faces and familiar faces and just, just celebrating, um, this really big milestone in the CHLDC. Um, you know, kind of timeline, we've been around, next year is going to be our fortieth year. So to actually have like, you know, our own home and home base and space for us to do, um, workforce development and also, um, college and career, um, work, community work, youth and family services work, our partnership with Kingsborough. We'll be starting a, a CNA cohort with Kingsborough in the space, um, next month. So Stephanie can talk a little bit about that, but yes, big things.
Yeah, so we have our CNA class starting November first, it's going to be an evening class, so from six to nine. Uh, Monday to Wednesday is in the building. Thursdays, they will report to Kingsborough for their laps. And then of course, they will have a, um, you know, a week for an externship at either the hesitation facility or, um, a nursing home in Park Slope, where they can kind of choose either weekday or a weekend based on their schedule. So I'm excited.
I'm excited for you. That sounds like good stuff. I'm like, I want to go take the November cohort class. That sounds awesome. Congratulations, you guys. I, I was really, uh, saddened that I couldn't attend. We got an email inviting us and I wasn't able to go last night, but maybe I'll just get my, my own chore and I'll feel special that way. If I can't be in the cohort, I can maybe like watch, I could sit in. Thank you guys for sharing that. Any other updates from the group that you guys want to share? Congratulations, Cypress Hills. Anybody who went to NYCETC, did you meet or learn anybody, learn anything? Interesting, I said learn anybody, whoops. Daniel's laughing at me. I deserve it. I'll take it. Awesome. The only other thing I wanted to share was an event invite that you guys may know about, but I wanted to put it in here in case anybody was interested. The Federal Reserve Bank of New York is hosting an in-person event on November third from nine to eleven AM centered on investments in affordable housing by healthcare systems and health insurers. And I'll send the we can't attend because we have another convening and, um, event on our end. But if anybody wants to go to this, that's the, uh, the event link right there. So I thought I'd share that in case anyone's interested, and if you do go, I would love to hear. And Beatrice, I see something from Beatrice. She says, hi, Megan.
Hi, Beatrice. No, I say hi, Megan. I'm Beatrice Brown from Secnix, Secnix Alliance, and this is very informative. I was not in the previous meeting, but I did wrote some notes and I'm looking forward to partner with y'all too, okay?
Thank you so much. That's really lovely to hear.
Event that's coming up, um, definite, I would like to be part of it too.
Awesome. I will keep you in the loop. I'll send out some links, um, to what we received and you will definitely be in the loop from, from here on out and all the things that we do healthcare network related. Right, um, thank you. I appreciate you, you saying that, and we're happy to have you. All right, so, does anybody have anything else they want to share? I'm going to give you twenty minutes of, of your day back, because I know we could probably all, I'll use it, we're doing lots of good work. Um, so I'm going to follow up with the link to the event I just mentioned. When I get Daniel's slide deck, I'll send that to you guys. I'm going to put everything in the, the public folder. I'll share all the stuff I normally share, I will share. Um, and if you have any questions for me, please let me know. If you haven't filled out the asset survey, that'll be linked in the follow-up email. Please do so. If you could do it within the next week or provide me feedback on, on any trouble you- Please do so. If you could do it within the next week or provide me feedback on on any trouble you're having within the next week, that'd be great. So I want to start planning some significant move forward. Does that sound good? Awesome. Thanks, guys. All right, eighteen minutes back of your day. I appreciate you, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Everyone, bye.